Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaw County Planning Commission, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones have been silenced. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehawcounty.gov site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days after this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, July 1st at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, July 16th at or after 9:00 a.m. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the May 20th, 2024 meeting are included in the consent agenda. Next, I'll read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the Planning Commission or the audience, and if any member of the Planning Commission or the audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand, and the item will be removed to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the May 20th, 2024 meeting. Item number two is Conditional Use Permit 24-27 to allow temporary fireworks sales on the properties legally described as Lot 4 and the north 10 feet and the east 125 feet of Lot 5, Block 1, Corson Fouskas addition, and lots 5, there's an exception of the east 125 feet, end of exception, and lot 6, Block 1, Corson Fouskas addition, and the east 125 feet, Lot 5, Block 1, Corson Fouskas addition, including Lot PA-1, Lot 6, Block 1, Corson Fouskas addition, all in Section 22, Township 102 North, Range 48 West, that is in Brandon Township. Petitioner is Mike Denning. Property owner is Troy Novak. That location of that is located in the northwest corner of Hamlock Boulevard and South Dakota Highway 11. Anyone from the audience, the staff, or the Planning Commission wish to speak to this Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. If your item has been approved, you're free to go. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number three, Kevin?
Flip through to the item here. All right, good evening. I am Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit Number 2428 to expand a Class A dairy concentrated animal feeding operation on the property described as the northwest quarter of Section 10 and to include the property described as the south half of the northeast quarter except H1 and the east, except the south 974 feet, east 389 feet in Section 10 of Lyons Township. Let's put that on the map. This is a pretty simple petition for an operation that has been working since early 2000s and has been coming forward with petitions to expand here and there as needed. This operation, as you can currently see on the map, it works within the quarter-quarter section here. The petitioner is requesting to place an extra building right here, which is on the neighboring property, which should be highlighted in this red. So that expands outside of their permitted area, and hence why the conditional use permit is requested here today. So the, in the site plan that was provided, there's a few changes to the overall layout of the property. Be this proposed building here, which I will note is actually under construction with the knowledge that if the conditional use permit does not pass, that it would have to be used for like cold storage and not part of the animals' production. So it'd be that building there, some additions to this building, and then a barn right here as well are all additions and part of the site plan. The proposed addition also includes an additional 500 animal units to increase from 8,200 animal units to 8,800 animal units on the property. That is in addition to what was most recently approved in 2021. I will note that since the 2021 permit was approved, that one of the major additions of that permit was including the methane digesters, which are located on the west side of the property. You can see the big, I'm not even sure what you call them, but the big tanks there that are used for that process. And overall, the property, the property owners have been working with staff and maintaining the farm and permitting various things throughout the years, and has come up with this request. And I'll just kind of note through the staff report that the property does meet all the conditions of approval. The setbacks being one of the main things for a CAFO operation would be that the new barn makes the property closer to the neighboring landowners over here, the neighboring dwellings. This property here was recently acquired by the petitioner, so that is kind of no longer needs a waiver part of the process. But the property right here then gets slightly closer to the operation. Staff does recommend that one of the conditions be that the farm maintains the trees on this property here or replaces them with new trees as a way to complete the required buffer for that reduction in setback that would be needed of a few hundred feet from the nearest dwelling over there. Which leads me then to, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit, and you'll see there in the staff report, the six conditions of approval. And I am here for any questions.
Any questions for him? This is just an expansion of what they currently have, correct? Okay. Okay, anyone else care to address this item? Is the petitioner here? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Lynn Bowdoin, 25130 470th Avenue, Baltic, South Dakota.
Anyone have any questions for him? Go ahead, Joe.
I think, I was part of the Leadership South Dakota group that got a tour of, and is that your son behind you? I think he gives a good tour, so.
Yeah, we don't want him to talk.
Definitely appreciate your operation out there. I guess my question is, I remember learning something about, and it was in the staff report here, that the methane digesters is kind of an innovative feature, relatively modern. Is that, does anything change with that, or are you guys just that many more ahead of livestock, you'll just use it that much more?
So, so really, I mean, this expansion that we have here, you know, the methane digesters are running, and they're running really pretty full. You know, we don't have a lot more capacity. Like the barn that we're putting on here, it's just, you know, my dad owned, my parents owned that 80, and, you know, if you look at the site, I mean, we were going to build a calf barn, you know, for bedded small calves and modernizing some of that, and some of the other areas were low, and it just looked like illogical to put it on that 80 that we just bought, and it's right adjacent to the baby calf barn. So that's really, and so to answer you, you know, this is mostly, you know, 200-pound calves to probably 450-pound calves. So they're pretty small, and it's just a bedding pack barn without liquid manure. So, and then we have stack areas, you know, approved stack areas, concrete stack areas where we put that manure, you know. So, yeah, not anything to do with the digesters are still working, and it's still.
Well, it's an impressive operation, a lot to be proud of there.
Any other questions for him? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to address this item? Close the floor. Commissioners?
Madam, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, you know, I think the fact that no one is here in opposition to this is a statement to the operation itself. It shows that they are good stewards of the land and their conscientiousness of the neighbors already. So yes, with that stated, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Conditional Use Permit 24-28. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. No old business? Thank you. New business?
Yeah, I think there's an agenda item on the two chapters that were sent out to you of our comprehensive plan update, and these are very important ones because they, we discussed some cutting-edge ideas. So I hope you had a chance to go through them, and I'll ask Kevin to further, and Mason to further explain the changes and where we are. And then after they're done, I wanted to give you just maybe a little bit of a timeline and what we have next, basically, on this.
All right, so good evening, Commissioners Mason, Stephen from the County Planning Office. So I'll just generally be going over the growth management chapter. A lot of what I did was more data and analysis breakdown, so I'll kind of go through some of that here. So what we did was, in the previous comp plan, they had data from 2002 to 2012, so they did it over 10 years of the numbers of acres in a farm, and so we updated that to be 2012 to 2022. And as you can see, the trends kind of continued of, the trend from 2002 to 2012 was that the land, or the farms smaller than 10 acres and greater than 1,000 acres both increased and everything else decreased. As you can see, that trend kind of stayed the same, but there is a little bit of outliers of the 180 to 500 acre increased quite a bit, and the 1,000 or more decreased quite a bit, but the 1 to 10 acres did still increase, which suggests that the hobby farm slash smaller acreage is still a big trend, and also this 180 to 500 is interesting. It kind of suggests that you have to be at least this big to be profitable, to have that much acreage, to have that many acres anymore. Having 50 to 100 acres just doesn't work in the economy. This is what that's suggesting, maybe that's not the case, but based on these numbers, that's kind of the suggestion. And then this is based on the same numbers, so you take the total land that is reported in farms to the USDA Ag Census. So you take that number divided by the total acres in the county, and that's where you get this farmland percentage here. So you can see in 2012, it was 78%, and in 2022, it was 62%. So that's a 16% loss just in 10 years, and that trend has been continuing for a very long time, for the last 25 to 30 years. I will just note that this is based on the USDA Ag Census, so just because it's now reported as farmland in that Ag Census doesn't necessarily mean it's not, it is developable land, developable land, or that it's not being currently used as farmland. That is just what's reported from farmers to the USDA. So land that's annexed, that's not developed yet, could be considered non-farmland even though it is still being farmed currently, stuff like that. So even though it's not a perfect number, it gives us an idea that there is quite a bit of farmland that is getting lost to other uses, whether that's to cities or to residential acreages that don't produce any farms, kind of like in this map. You see that the 1 to 9 acres is up, but not all of those. We see a lot of what we approve in the county, at the County Planning Office, a lot of the new acreages are in this 1 to 9 acres, and not all of them produce agriculture. So that's kind of where a lot of this is going. And the graph to the right here kind of just breaks down what the 62% breaks down into further in farmland, so you can see a majority of it is cropland, pasture land, and then the farmstead and other uses is the smallest. And so that kind of is, this farmstead is kind of a weird distinction where a farmstead is a house that is on a property that produces agriculture, and acreage is just a property that could be the same size but doesn't produce agriculture. So like those residential acreages that are in that 1 to 10 acres are not included in this cropland or farmland area. It would be included in the non-farmland area on this graph. And this didn't, graph didn't really change much, kind of just new data from 2012 to now showing, there is, this dip, there was no data in 2020 due to COVID-19, so there's kind of no data here, so this dip is kind of, doesn't represent anything very well, but you can see that corn did steadily increase, and then it dropped after COVID, and has kind of gone up a little bit the last few years, and then soybean since 2007 did kind of trend upward, then fell, and we don't really have enough data from 2020 onward to really know exactly where that is going yet. So that'll be something we'll have to update for the future. But yeah, I guess that's just kind of a background of graphs, giving you an idea of what the trends we see that's being reported. Again, like I said, that's not full picture, just because that's not, it's not from, yeah, I guess it's a survey of farmers, and what I've heard from a lot of people who do those surveys is they're not entirely accurate. They don't report everything, or they only report general acres, or they report general numbers for cattle, or things like that. So, yeah, I guess if you have any questions based on those, I can answer them, otherwise I might turn it over to Kevin here to explain some of the changes that he made, but.
Any questions for him? Thank you.
All right, so other parts of the chapter in growth management, touch on ag tourism, commercial industrial chapters or section as well. I'll note that generally speaking, we did more just kind of updating of those sections rather than is really reviewing them going forward, because if we were going to go deep into those, we would probably want more community involvement and a full kind of process of updates sort of thing. But then we went, we did do the density task force revolving a residential in the county. The task force recognizes that there's a need for new housing in the county, and the, but suggested the policy should minimize the harm that new residential growth in the county would do, but maximize the benefits. And by, some of the things that come out of that and goals and actions of writing this residential section would be that the county should direct most of the housing growth into the 11 already incorporated municipalities where there are already services available and the, ready to grow with new roads that are capable of traffic, holding traffic, sewer systems, and that sort of thing. One of the big things that came out of the discussion of the task force was developing rules for accessory dwelling units. I think we touched upon that a little bit here, that to allow with certain criteria a second dwelling on a property, and those criteria would be such as, we haven't nailed them down, but such as limiting the second dwelling to, say, 50% of the size of the primary dwelling, to make sure that that is truly secondary to the house and not a second full, ready-to-go house. Limit the size of the property, like, or make the, so that the property has to be a platted lot. That way, someday in the future, the property owner cannot split that house off as a separate property without us knowing it, because they would have to go through our approvals process to further subdivide the property if it's a platted lot. That sort of thing with the accessory dwelling units. Then also with new residential growth, we looked at the possibility of what, when could we get to yes, so to speak, on a new subdivision in the rural area? And we came up with criteria that would allow us to do that, and largely speaking, is to try to ease that transition from rural to urban. So things such as, if we have a petition that where you had more than 40 acres in size, so we're not converting small lots into subdivisions, having access to paved county highways, so we're not having troubles with rural roads getting torn up, establishing road districts on the property, so we know exactly who's going to maintain the roads and when, and doesn't pose a greater burden onto the townships. Maximize, or maximum lot size, make sure that the lot sizes aren't so large that they become a problem to annex in the future. Sanitary sewer district, much like the road district, so that way we have an easy hookup, where instead of having to hook up every house individually, it'd be an easier transition to take out the sanitary sewer and just hook on to the new sewer system of the municipality at a future date. And then documented available water, stormwater management for things like rain, like we had this week, and then development within a transition area, and that transition area we'll have to discuss a little bit more at a future time, because that's part of another chapter of the area, just out, or where would that transition area boundary be outside of city limits in the county? And I guess I will, there's another chapter after this, but I can stop for some questions here.
Any questions for him?
Madam Chair, I had one. I appreciate this list, it's kind of a helpful guideline, because I think we've gotten a few of these requests that just haven't been framed correctly, and maybe this will help us get to yes, I guess, on some, because I still think some of the housing crisis is a supply-side issue, so trying to find a way to get more housing. Was there any talk in the group on any potential reforms around building eligibility and collecting areas rather than having to transfer them adjacently, thinking about some of these areas that we might designate? But just what was that conversation, what was the feedback from different experts on that group?
Sure. So actually, I'll get to that, maybe it'll be a good transition to the next chapter. Because that, so that was the growth management chapter, and this chapter is the rural conservation chapter. They are kind of the similar, and how do we protect what's there? And this is the chapter that did previously have discussion about doing a transfer development right type of thing in the rural area. So these are the subjects within the rural conservation, historic preservation, natural character, farming, community, and then housing density. So generally, like I said before, the historic preservation, we're going to encourage the keeping historic areas historic in scenic sites as well. For the natural character, you know, the natural area, the county provides benefits to more than just making it look pretty. It holds water for wetlands, it has wildlife potential, lots of ecosystem services. Farming and community, we've seen, as we kind of looked in that one graph, in the past, though, some increases in farms, less than 50 acres, and decreases in farms that are greater than 50 acres, showing that kind of smaller groups, like what was just proposed earlier today, a nine-acre parcel that can be used for produce-type farming. And then a, finally, the rural housing density. Just as a reminder, rural housing has, generally speaking, one house for every 40 acres. We have every meeting, it seems, we have a request to transfer building eligibility, such as this one here. There's approximately 8,657 available building eligibility's in the county. Over the next 10 years, staff estimates that there'll be approximately 528 new units over the next 10 years to be constructed. Generally, the comprehensive plan, we're encouraging maintaining the density zoning. And then with density zoning, we currently have in our ordinance that you can transfer a building eligibility with conditional use between two contiguous parcels under the same ownership, and that is generally the parts of the transfer requirements that people get hung up on. In our discussions of density zoning, they, the task force did not like the idea of moving building eligibility's across an entire county, creating places that are kind of housing deserts and places where there's booming, where it can cause problems for the receiving areas. But one way that you can allow a little more slack in the system would be to find a way to remove the same ownership requirement out of the transition, or the transfer process. By considering changing that same ownership, you now have those maybe smaller parcels without a building eligibility, be able to have an agreement with their neighbor to transfer one over, or if somebody needs more than just, say, accessory dwelling unit, they need a full another house on their property, they can come up with that agreement, and we can transfer that over between contiguous parcels, so it limits the distance, but under different ownership, so that way it allows a little more flexibility in that. So that was probably the biggest change in that density task force as far as transfers is, was the suggestion. And I think, I don't know, Mike, Adam, if you have, or Bonnie, if you have any thoughts on what, more about that density task force transfer stuff?
Not on the transfer stuff. I was just gonna say, the eligibility's on there, we, when you brought that graph of what every township had available, I guess, going back to that, we felt they were all pretty equal, I guess, of what, is that the right way of saying it, that what was available and what was there? So we just kind of decided not to be able to transfer between townships to township, I guess, and leave a little less headache on the township headaches they would receive with that, you know, so.
No, no, I agree. I think the biggest thing too was, you know, you touched on creating those deserts that 20, 30 years from now, everyone's gonna be looking to develop into, and now we're gonna say, well, we moved them all already, sorry, guys, and most of those are probably being city limits, the ones that were transferred are more likely being city limits. And then, yeah, the point about the continuous ownership, I'd say people would, there already was a workaround, you know, it was, we'll go buy another four acres and transfer it there and buy that four acres and sell it back. Well, that's just a lot of paperwork for, not only the people that are trying to do that process, but really, I mean, for the county too to record deeds, to record all that information, for something that, you know, really should be allowable as long as it's contiguous. I mean, the workaround was there, why are we making workout work for everybody?
So, yeah, I guess that's all I have for the chapters that we rewrote, and hopefully you got a chance to read them as we send them out, and, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to thank the staff for putting that all together. I know that's a lot of work sometimes.
Yeah, and so one of the things I wanted to talk to you a little bit about was, our intention, as we've indicated to you, is we want to have some public open houses, and we're looking at. we're looking at probably having one in Del Rapids, one at Hartford and one in Brandon. But, so given the agricultural community, it's, it's all about timing and when we do that, because people are going to be, now farmers and ag people are pretty busy in fields and then in the fall, they're going to be harvesting. So typically, we like doing these all public open houses in like, end of October, November, because people are out of the fields and then it's, you know, you're back, school's back in and people are on vacations and so on. So we'll be putting together some ideas of where to have those. And I think we still have a couple chap, we have to let the future land use left and implementation. So we have two chapters left. I think we're, we've really knocked a lot of it out of the park. I mean, we've, we've gotten it out of the, out of the way. We've, the task force did an awesome job on helping us sort of craft some changes. I really am happy with the changes that we made. Just like Mike said, there was already a workaround and I think, I think we're simplifying it, but yet not throwing the barn door wide open and transferring them all over the county. So that, along with some of the accessory dwelling units that we're proposing, I think we are going to solve a lot of problems that we run into on a daily basis or monthly basis. So I think we're, I think we're benefiting the public. We'll get these other two chapters done and then we will be bringing it out for a, a fall, like, open house, I think is what we'd like to do, unless you think we should really speed this up. But then we'll bring it back to the planning commission for some formal hearings and then it'll go to the county, for the actual plan. And then it'll go to county commission and we'll have a new comprehensive plan, hopefully. So, any, any questions on anything else?
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll just make the comment that I appreciate, I'd, I'd rather take a few extra, build a few extra months into the process and feel like we got good public input and the proper process. I, I'm not that much in, or even though I was maybe one of the commissioners pushing for, we need to do this process, whether it comes out as a final product in early 2025 or we got it done this fall, I'd much rather have it fall into next year, but that we know we got a lot of good public input. So I think I'm, I'm good with that schedule, but yeah, we'll want to put meat on the bones and make sure we get the word out and get some good public input.
Well, and we, we sort of struggle with how to get the, the word out and, and I, yeah, we'll, we'll either have to do aver, I mean, we'll have to do ads in the paper or something. And Kevin had suggested we also maybe think about the fair. But we've done this before, Kevin and Mason weren't involved with this, but I, I've been involved with having stuff at the fair before, like probably 15 years ago. And the problem is, you have to have it always manned. And so it's a lot of overtime for staff when there's only three of us, that you're there all day long and all evening and you're there all weekends. And so, but you do get a lot, you, it is, it is interesting. You get a lot of traffic, but you get a lot of people complaining about the city. So it's, it, you're, it's like where, it, it's a lot of spillover of all the city issues and why can't you fix them? And so you get a lot of eyeballs on you, but not necessarily rural people amazingly. I mean, it's a county fair, but it's a lot of city people. So I don't know if there's a lot of benefit to that. But if you have some ideas on how to get the word out, I mean, we've talked about making township supervisors aware of it. You know, how to get the word out that when we get ready to have our public open houses, how do you get the word out? So if you guys get ideas, I mean, we talked about working with Scott Bus at Minnehaw Community Water and putting a, a note maybe on your water bill, the Minnehaw Community Water Bills, because if you are out in the county, you're more than likely on Minnehaw Community Water. So, I mean, there's, we're looking at other ways to do that too, but it all takes a lot of effort, more than you would, would anticipate.
And one other note I'd put out and we can talk more offline here, but Steve Groen hosts the town and townships meeting out at the highway building and that meeting has a good turnout. I wonder if we could give a presentation to that group as kind of a.
And they do, they do that in September. I think they have a, I think it's in April, and we have, Ryan, you're on the township.
It's in November.
November, okay.
Yeah, it'd be the, I think it's the third Monday in November.
That would work too, and that's.
And that's like every supervisor from, or.
Yeah, I just think that would be a good audience and, and I, I know our highway superintendent has had good luck with that group of just presenting different items, so.
Yeah, well, that'd be a good way to get the word out and I'm, there, you know, we can work, like I said, if you think of target audiences, how we can get the word out of meetings and what's going on, I just want people to be aware of it, so they can have their say.
You've done this before.
Yeah.
And the timing, the timing really reflects the attendance.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been to them before. I mean, that's what it's all about.
Yeah, it, it's timing and getting the word out. And if it's something controversial, the word gets out. If it's something that, something that is like ho-ha, you know, they feel like is not pertaining to them, it, it just sort of goes by the wayside.
So you're saying we should pick one really controversial topic, just, just as a bluff to, to get people to turn out and then bait and switch and it's really boring, incremental reform?
Maybe. We'll just throw a, we'll throw a produce stand in there.
Okay. Is that it, Scott?
That's all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.